Good evening, I'd like to call to order the School Board Truth and Taxation Hearing. Sarah, would you please take the role?
Overman.
Yes ma'am.
Allen.
Here.
McKean.
Here.
Hoss.
Yes.
Thompson.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Swanson.
Good evening. All right, Jeff, it's all you.
Okay, all right, thank you. What we're going to be doing tonight is asking the Board to approve the final levy. It's for, it's the levy for taxes payable in 2019, and those funds will be used to fund the 2019 school year. I'm going to click through all of this, so there we go. So what we are required to do at this meeting is provide budget information, and I've always said for school districts, it doesn't quite work, because we don't have our budget in place for the year this levy is going to fund. Brought that up years and years ago when this law first came into, came into place, and they said, "Well, school districts, just talk about your current budget." So, so I'll do that, but the levy that we're passing is for 1920. I'll give you information on the, on the current year budget. So, then you talk about FY19 budget information, discuss the payable 2019 levy, and then provide for, for public accounting. So I'll just kind of run through financing, the public education in Minnesota comes from a combination of state aid, federal dollars, locally generated fees, and property taxes, and that's what we're, we're going to be talking about, property tax source, for this presentation. If we look at our governmental funds for, again, for 1819, so this is the current year budget, you can see that we rely heavily on state aids and grants for about 63 percent, but the other significant source of revenue is from property taxes, and that's our, that's our 28 percent. So we're going to be asking you tonight, although it'll be for the next year, what to act on those property taxes for payable 19 and the 1920 school year. A breakdown of our expenditure budget, you can see that what makes sense is when you look at the, the big pieces of the pie there, those are dollars that are in the classroom, so the 32 percent regular instruction, our special education program at 14 percent vocational instructional support, and so on. So, I think we look like most districts with the, with the breakdown that, that you're seeing here, on the expenditures, and then on the, so general fund equity, of course, these are, I'm showing 16, 17, 17, 18, and then what's projected for June 30, 2019. So, the unassigned fund balance is one we, we watch pretty closely, and we see that that's going to be growing, as well as the restricted fund balance. And that 1819, that big increase there for, for this current year, is a lien sale that we expect to take place towards the end of, end of this fiscal year.
Just in the restricted.
That's in for.
Just in the restricted.
In the restricted, yeah.
For others.
Yep, yep, and other improvements on some of our other fund balance areas, areas as well. So, that's information on the current year budget. And then when we get to the school district property taxes, taxes are made up of voter approved levies. We're going to see later that the increase that we're looking at for, for payable, for payable 19, 1920 school year is pretty much, maybe not pretty much, but solely related to the increase in, in amortization of our, of our building bonds. So it's made up of, so voter approved, we really only have, we've got capital projects piece, and we've got significant part in, in building bond issues, and then there's discretionary levies for LPFM, long-term facilities maintenance, safe schools, building leases, different programs. So, looking at proposed levy change, so if we look at what we had in place for the final pay levy for 2018, and that's funding this current school year, and then we've got proposed amount for pay 19. You can see that in the areas that we actually, maybe we have some discretion or we control. You can see the general fund is actually dropping by 318,000. Community education, pretty, I guess you can just say that's, that's pretty flat from one year to the next, and then you see a $2.2 million increase in our debt service line. And that's just, that represents enhanced payments required to amortize our debt in that 1920 school year. So the levy increase, 1.9, you can see that's, got the decrease again, the general fund increase in, in debt service, yeah.
Before, sorry.
Go ahead.
Before you go on, so the increase that is happening is essentially solely due to the building of the high school, and do we have, which is voter approved, do we have any discretion over that line at all?
Um, I would say no.
No.
Because we don't want to default on it. We don't want, we don't want to, I guess we could say, "Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to make our bond payments."
There's nothing we can do about that line.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're committed to making those payments and, and not defaulting on any of our, any of our bond issues. Yeah, that's pretty much a fixed dollar amount that, that kind of people approve when they pass.
When they voted for the high school.
When they voted for the high school.
And Jeff, since that's pretty much a fixed amount, do we have any idea what that's going to do next year?
Um, we do. We've, we've got an amortization schedule, I think, that we, I'm just going to, I could know the exact numbers, we were just looking at it.
But it's right here, it's going to go up.
We're going to see, we're going to see an increase for a couple more years, and then I think we'll see a pretty significant decrease when we get to, I believe it's FY, FY22. Again, we are just, the bonds were structured, the amortization schedule was in place, when you sold the bonds, and we're following that schedule and making payments.
So the, the line item that we have any discretion on, which is the general fund, is actually going down?
Correct, yeah. Let me jump to, so we'll break it down now by funds. So this is where we saw the decrease. So, the only voter approved that we have within that general fund is our capital projects making up 21.8 percent. And then, we've got legislative formula driven, and those are, those are areas where we do control a little bit, but again, they're kind of all by, by formula. And then expenditure limit kinds of programs, building lease, all for leasing buildings, and it costs 1.7, we turn around and, and levy that amount. But there would be some discretion, say, we don't want to do some long-term facilities projects, we could reduce that levy. So anyway, there is discretion there, and that's the one that we're driving down by 300 some 1,000. Questions on that? We go to community education, legislative formula driven, again, basic community education, ECAB, there's a dollar amount, expenditure limit programs within community ed, our childcare, home visiting, maintenance, adult disabled, and we saw that community ed basically flat by $600,000, $600, $600 change within community ed. So here's our, the debt service, so there's our 22.5, and you can see it's all in that category of, of voter approved. Questions on that? Components of the levy. And we put this, this slide together to show, I'm saying that this is school district taxes only. I know that we, I think, across the board, we saw about a 6 percent increase in total market value, but I'm using this example as, assume no increase in market value, and we show the taxes payable and the tax capacity rates, referendum market value rates for 2018, 2019, if there was no change in market value, because we're driving that, we're that kind of discretionary area down, and there's some changes in fiscal disparities and tax income financing, you actually could have a decrease in, in your school property taxes. So, I think I say on air, as I want to be sure, school tax examples only, so if there's other components of your tax bill, city, county, and so on, this is just looking at, just looking at the, at the school district.
So this is no change in.
So assuming no increase, yeah, I'm assuming no increase in, in market value, and I'm sure there's ranges from zero to, who knows what, 25, 30 percent, so.
So if there was no increase in my home value, my school taxes.
Would actually.
Would be decreasing this year, or next year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course, we don't control.
No, we don't control.
And, so what we're going to ask the Board to do later then, is one of the agenda items, is to approve the levy. Recall that we did a maximum levy, I think, back in September for the proposals, but tonight we need to do the actual dollar amount. So it'd be recommended that the Board approve the payable 2019 property tax levy in the Questions?
Mr. Chairman, forward. Jeff? Just a request, if you could add an amortization schedule for the next five, seven years, add that available.
Here, I can give you, we got a second here, we got that schedule.
He can have my job.
Well, I'm saying that just for us, hopefully as well, but some people can.
Uh, PNI, looks like we would go up about 1.3 for the next year, another 1.2 the following year, and then it would drop for fiscal year '22.
Why?
Why does it drop? It's just the way the, the payments were structured.
They paid off some.
So, it, they're, you know, you can, you can have, you can have your bonds amortized a number of different ways, so it could have been that anticipation of another bond referendum. So, oftentimes you'll just see the amortization schedule follow, if you assume that, that market value is going to increase 4 percent, you might structure it that way, so that you keep a consistent tax rate, so. And then there's another, I think there's another scheduled decrease, and I was saying 27, 2027 or 2028, again, about $6 million.
So if I'm tracking, right, this year we're paying $22,500,000 roughly.
Right.
About 1.3 percent increase would be, like, $225,000, $225,000.
23, 23.9 for the next, for FY.
Oh, 1.3, sorry, I.
You're saying absolute 9 percent.
No, I thought you were saying percent, okay, so, yeah, 1.3.
And then it drops.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jeff? If not, because this is a public hearing, this is an opportunity for anyone that came to the meeting tonight for the express purpose of talking through anything having to do with fiscal taxation, we would like you to go ahead and sign in on the, on the board here, I think so if you name an address, and then.
Right, let's put it there. Come on up.
My name is Tyler Nye, 2020, he's having a lease in Shakopee here, and I'd like to know why my taxes, oh, by the way, what is the average increase in property tax for the year 1920?
For individual residents?
Yes.
That would be determined by the county.
Is that by the county?
Yeah, but we can, 6 percent, so we look at the increase in our market value from last year to current year, so overall, it's 6 percent.
Why does mine go 48.4 percent?
I don't think that we can answer that, but.
That's what I'd like to figure out.
County could probably help you with that. We don't have anything to do with sending property values.
Well, I, I was told I was mixed chuckle from the school.
He said he was told the biggest chuckle's from the school.
Don't know, we'd have to see your numbers, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's your property value determines all of your taxes, and if your property value goes up.
Mine went over $1,500 up.
The?
For one year.
The property value?
Property tax.
Okay.
But the value, but your value increased significantly.
Not that much. If I would, I'd sell it right now. I wouldn't hesitate.
Oh, I'm, sorry, I, I thought I heard you say that.
No, my property tax increased 48.4 percent from one year, from last year and this year, from 18 to 19. So I'd like to figure out why they feel it should be deemed so necessary to jack my taxes up quite so high. And being that our, our house is not that new of a home anymore, and I, I can't see where they can justify jacking it up that much. And we have no children in school here either, we haven't in a current number of years.
Jeff, what would you recommend if somebody has a question such as this gentleman with regards to the background?
Yeah, I, I really like to look at your statement, so, I can do it right now. I guess we'll do it right now.
How's it going?
Yeah, I, I probably don't want to share this, but let me just show you.
No.
Your value. Yeah, so I, if you want to share that, but I don't.
No, no.
But that's your.
Yeah, my appraisal of my property value was like, a lot more than show was here already, because I checked with the county, and why not go sudden?
Yeah, so you've got a significant increase in value, for one year, the next.
So would that be something that he could address with the county?
Yep. Yeah, that's what you would want to do.
I'm asking, is this the tax assessor's office is the best place to start?
Yeah, that's where I would go, yeah.
Other guests?
Gru, G R U, G A R. Gru, slide six.
What's that?
Six, sure. So the land sale, it's going to be part of the gain and the restricted fund, which address is that one?
How about that?
It's the old one. 1.1 million.
Yeah.
And so the gains are up, they're going to be around 700?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the, in the, I'm just saying, year over year.
The, what I, last I saw, the land sale was up was going to be 700,000.
On what line?
Yeah, it's always.
One of the questions I had regarding the, on slide eight, and the increases required for the debt service fund, does our bond rating have anything to do with the additional requirements as far as like the additional interest that we're paying?
No, that's for people's bonds, no.
None, zero.
Yes, no, it's only for a float something, yeah.
Awesome. I'll confirm that. And then last on slide nine, regarding the expenditure limits for the revenue components for the building lease and the employment, that 1.7 million, what is that comprised of? That's on slide nine.
Would you go to that, please, Jeff?
Right there?
Yep, that 1.7 million.
Yeah, um, so the building lease for.
All day K expansions.
Yes, all day K expansion, that's a big part of that, Tocana, this building.
Okay.
I think we've got a small amount of lease with the intermediate district that gets added in there, and that might be, I don't know if that's 100,000, but, but the biggest piece of that would be the all day care, the building expansion.
All right. And in regards to that, because we care about that kind of every year, is that something that's going to be ongoing, like perpetuity, or sooner or later that going to level off?
You guys would pay.
Yeah. Know what that schedule is?
That's kind of what Matt's getting to, I, you'd have to look at the amortization schedule for each individual.
Building.
Yeah.
Okay.
We know we have a chunk coming off in a couple of years, and then Jeff is living to have a chunk again several years out of there.
In another six years.
Based on the amortization schedule.
And one, as far as this building and space goes, once the lease up, and is it going to be continued in perpetuity as well, do we know like what the game plan is for? No, we just, we just negotiated a year extension to give us time to figure out what's going to be to do, is this the right place to be long-term or short-term, so those decisions will have to be made inside of 2018 for sure.
And the intention is to create facilities, task force to look at that, comprise the the community members as well.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's a couple of issues.
Jeff, I know I've read over some of the minutes from the last week, and so that was part of my process. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board, I'm not here specifically for my taxes, but I wanted to clarify a couple of points for some folks in the audience, maybe yourselves. The, the average market value increase for a house, a lower priced house was about 11 percent. That's an average, maybe more, maybe less. The next step up was about 9 percent, and then it drops off for the higher values. A couple of points too, some questions that were raised, the, the valuation of the property is Scott County Assessor's Office. The, the other thing that's hidden properties is the market value exclusion. It used to be called market homestead credit, they changed it to market value exclusion, and the higher the value goes up, the more your exclusion drops off, which ends up being a increase in the valuation on top of the valuation increase, okay? Which is affecting the tax multiplier for each jurisdiction, city, county, school, and the others.
And Councilman Lehman, you can see that on your statement, because it shows your prior year, correct?
Correct.
Because mine, for example, went down, the exclusion you're talking about.
Correct.
So it's, it's on the statement, you can see the impact.
It is. So as your value goes up.
Right.
The amount of the exclusion.
Goes down.
Goes down, and you really want that exclusion to go up if, if you want to benefit it.
Right.
The exclusion is specifically state legislator's issue, it's not a local school or city issue or county, it's the state legislation, that's what was passed at the state level, so if we want to change that, we have to talk to our state leaders, if we want to change the value on a property, we have to talk to the county assessor's office, and if we want to talk about line item individual dollar amounts, then we have to go to our respective bodies.
Bodies.
Just some clarification.
Thank you.
For what it's worth too, I'll just throw out there that when the county assesses your property versus a, a real estate appraiser going out and assessing your property, you're going to get two, two different numbers. That's, that's going to happen, and happens all the time, so just so you know.
And the county does have a way to appeal their valuation, but only in the spring.
Right, you have to do it in the spring, you get the additional notice in May, then a long time you can do it. Not now, when you're actually getting your tax bill.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, if not, I'm going to give you a motion for us to adjourn the Truth and Taxation Hearing for the Senate.
I'll make the motion.
Angela?
Okay.
Director John, all of you, therefore signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carried. All right, we'll move right along. Page number three, let's see here.
Wait, you can give us just a couple seconds to get the kids for recognition.
Should we do the pledge?
Oh, that would be great.
I was just going to roll us in and then do the flag.
That would be great.
Okay.
Oh, but she can't.
No, wait, hang on.
She has to roll.
Clerk can roll public.
She's out. She's trying to wear a parka.
I almost can't even have one. It's her blushes.
You make a.
This is Christmas story.
I'll go, follow them, we can get back up. What's his name? Chelsea's.
You go like what?
Christmas tree.
Not me, don't, she said.
It's the hospital.
Not much of a copy.
We can tell.
They're coming down the hallway.
You want to gabble some, or?
Gabble.
Do a roll?
Um, I think you could say that you took the roll as above, if you want to.
And I'll say, we took the roll as above.
Thank you for saying that. Tell the clerk.
We'll just call this.
Clerk might want to know that.
Clerk, clerk, clerk.
What, huh? Sorry, what?
We are not going to do another roll.
Oh, we are not.
The clerk's just going to go ahead and say that that.
Is done.
That worked for us.
Roll from a.
Look at you, getting all.
We're going to roll, yeah. She just didn't want to do that.
On the edge.
Time we start again.
So we, so are we going to do?
Blood will need to see that it's down.
Even though it says specifically in the.
Hey, she just.
And Sarah knows. We call it.
She knew with all of the.
You have a crowd. Okay.
All good. I'm going to do the flag. All the same.
Two best you can, there's some space at the far side.
All right, is that everyone? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call the Shakopee School Board Business Meeting for Monday, December 10th, 2018, back in session. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are Shakopee Schools' good news, good news items, we've got a number of good news items to talk about tonight. First up, congratulations to our Shakopee volleyball team for making it to the Class 3A State Volleyball Tournament, held November 8th at Excel Energy Center. Our team qualified for the state tournament with a dominating performance. The Sabres dominated the number five team in the state in Minnetonka to win the Class 3A Section 2 Championship and qualify for the state tournament. At this point, I'll turn it over to Coach Matt Bush. All right, oh, sit down. Step right up. We have these fabulous certificates for framing, so if you go ahead and introduce your players, one at a time. The Sabres dominated the number five team in the state in Minnetonka to win the Class 3A Section 2 Championship and qualify for the state tournament. At this point, I'll turn it over to, uh, Coach Matt Bush. There you go. Step right up. We have these fabulous certificates for framing, so you go ahead and introduce your players. When I'm done.
So, here. Randy with that feet. And a ball. And coach Lisa Walker.
Good? Okay, you in position, everybody?
So large group, uh, let's get everyone together.
Can they come here?
Slide this back a little bit. Is it, okay, hold on.
Remember that right after that.
One, two, three. One more for safety, one, two, three.
Alright.
Okay, before you guys go, can I say something?
Sure.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a volleyball player, I don't even have a daughter. But I, but I haven't missed many games in the last couple of years and I want you to know, it has been an absolute joy watching you guys play, watching you coach, your teamwork, how you grew this year. It was so cool to watch you develop. Um, and then at state, it might have been my proudest high school moment, even though my kids weren't involved in it. So, um, I just have, just want to thank you for a fabulous couple of years. It's been awesome.
Thank you.
Florida government. Okay, more honors. Uh, congratulations to Shakopee High School sophomore Jada Becker. Is Jada with the stage? Come on up, Jada. Jada, who qualified to run at the Class 2A State Cross Country Meet held on November 3rd. Jada placed 46th in the time of 1856.2. Becker qualified for state by finishing second at the Section 2 AA Meet at Gale Woods Farm. You have some coaches with you today?
Me.
One coach? Alright. Let's get up here. Coach Lauren?
Yes, nice.
And he's handed to, what did you ask him? Alright. The, uh, the words of wisdom for others, following in your footsteps.
Long jerk on either side of the chair.
So, follow up. Alright, we're not done yet. We have more. Alright, congratulations goes out to Rebecca Forbes. Speech, Bo, Bob's?
Bob's.
Bob's.
It's okay.
Get this, ah, about that. Okay, Rebecca Forbes, speech language pathologist at Jackson Elementary for being named an excellent educator by WCCO Channel 4. So I don't want to read this, could you tell us a little bit about what you do?
Sure. I've been a speech language pathologist in Chancree Schools for 14 years and before that, my total is 32 years. Anyway, um, so we work, as a speech language pathologist, I've worked with children with articulation errors a lot. Rs and Ls and Fs and Ths and when the gal from CCO came, that's actually what I was doing, so that's what she, that's what she filmed. Well, we also do language, expressive language, we do non-verbal communication systems. So it's, I guess it's so exciting because as I said on the clip, everybody is different, they really are, they're really different. And I look at it as kind of a puzzle. I like to figure out what, what's going to work and it's just really cool when it works. Frustrating when it doesn't, but usually it does and, and that part's really, really fun. So that's what I do.
And you have how many students that you're taking care of?
I have about 50.
50.
By the time now in one.
Uh, I don't know if you remember my son, Calm?
I do, of course I do.
He was a very late talker when you were working with young twos.
Of course, I do.
And you taught him how to speak. Uh, and that was very rewarding and we only want to refund about a third of the time. But, uh, no, but it was fantastic and we thank you very much.
Wow, thank you.
Teaching our young boy how to communicate.
Thank you, thank you.
We're going to get you a tour.
Oh, no.
No, no, yes, for right now.
Really, every place I call, I have to say, like Forbes, but no R, so it's ridiculous. Oh, thank you, very nice to meet you, too, Sarah. Thank you. Yeah.
Your time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's still scheduled. Alright, feel free to stay, you know, it's a fun, it's a fun meeting.
But if you don't want to.
I want to go down while it's here. Nice for coming.
Thank you.
Alright, we're going to move on with the agenda, move on to item, uh, number six, consideration of the agenda as presented. Sarah, are there any additions that you need to know? Okay, I'll indicate a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Move on to seven consent items. Indicate a motion to approve consent. Angela? Antonio, any discussion consent?
Uh, nothing other than I just want to say I'm pleased to see that we continue to find ways to grow our activities for our students and to four clubs that we're not going to talk about tonight, but, uh, that's great. And the more the kids can be involved, the things that excite them, the better, better off for them and the district, so good for them.
And, uh, just want to reiterate that most research, all the research I've shown, or seen, has shown that, um, the number one indicator of success in school is involvement in, um, school-related activities. So the more that we can offer our kids, um, the better off we'll be, so thank you for that.
Good, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. We do not have any old business discussion items, so we move on to nine old business action items. Uh, Jeff, you want to come up again and we'll go ahead and do approval of the final payable 2019 levy?
I'm thinking you probably don't want me to go through my presentation. So, but you know, we've, we've complied with all of the requirements of the, of the levy process, including the taxation hearing that we just completed. So we'd ask the board to approve the, the pay 19 levy in the amount of $38,488,147.44. Thank you, sir. Questions?
The taxation was recorded, so anyone who wanted to watch that and see the dialogue and conversation.
Alright, if there are no questions for Jeff, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the levy as presented.
Make that motion.
Great. And Sean, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you, thanks, Jenny.
Yes, sir. Okay, move on to item 9.2. This is, uh, sort of the review, if you will, from our last board meeting, acceptance of the 2018 ICS agreement then. Can you take this one away?
I will, yeah. This is just an update. We, uh, there were a lot of details we were still working out at the time of the meeting. This actually is a change. I think probably the worst case scenario is what was on this board would be that top left box. Thank you for highlighting that, uh, previously. That box said, uh, $2,500,000 even. That box now says $2,353,275. And that is in our favor in terms of our agreement with ICS. This is the precise number. Uh, we knew we were working on that detail. I, I believe Dave and Reeve from ICS were working on that during the meeting. Uh, and rather than kind of rush that, we said, let's come back and let's make sure we get the exact precise number and that is it. And, uh, still feel very good about that agreement. And, uh, also feel very, very good about the work ICS is doing on, on the high school. In fact, met with them today and, uh, they continue to work very hard and do great work there, so.
Okay, some questions for what?
Just a thank you to Mike and Dave and everybody involved for the pitch and the making sure that we're double checking everything and getting it right before we formally approve.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the addendum, uh, of the 2018 ICS agreement as presented.
Take the motion.
And Matt, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Move on to 9.3, pool of school district policy updates. Rich?
So this is in, uh, kind of a pickup from the last meeting where we had the first reading, so we've had the chance, you all had the chance to review the policies. I didn't have any additional comments. These were pretty straightforward. I will reemphasize or reiterate one or a couple of changes that are being made. You saw those reflected in the policies. Uh, several were just accepting as-is, uh, and I won't run through those numbers, but the vast majority. If you recall, 213, which is about committees and school board operation, we are, we put the notation there, the, the names that we go, our committees by, or that we follow with our committee structure. We also included a change, and this was a change from the MSBA policy, that called for a secretary to be appointed for every committee. We felt that was adequate just to have the chair report out, so you saw that change to that policy. Um, we talked about, uh, making sure that, uh, our transportation partners were aware of some of the requirements relative to testing for their drivers, uh, making sure that they're communicated, we will take care of that. And then finally, 613 is picking up the, uh, graduation requirement changes that we approved previously and incorporating that into the policy. So again, a lot of technicalities, really nothing substantive in terms of major policy changes. So if you don't have any additional questions, it's basically accepting what we talked about last time and the summary I gave you then, uh, in addition to what I just said.
I'll just call again with the 613 grant requirements, are you ready now?
Yes. Any questions?
Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to accept the school district policy updates and policy 613 graduation requirements from teaching and mentoring as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Alright, move on to, uh, 9.4, we'll call up Keith Ray. Hi, Keith. Keith is going to give us an update on the, um, SEIU Custodial Maintenance Contract.
Yeah, so we, um, we completed, we had a tentative agreement with our custodian maintenance group. They voted on this, um, this agreement and recently passed it. So this is, um, for your review and your, um, approval. So, uh, it's a two-year agreement, um, that starts with, um, mostly this group was looking at trying to, um, get an increase for those people who get no increases in steps. So if you look at the second item there on the one year, they wanted to give a 1.6% increase to those folks who don't move a step. Uh, everybody else would move a step, um, on their salary schedule, but it would only be retroactive to September 23rd. Primary reason we put those delays in there was to fit the monetary, um, settlement in the 4.23, um, target number there at the bottom. Then on year two, uh, pretty much steps were back to normal in terms of July 1st. And then again, they wanted to, um, give an increase to those people who weren't getting a step, they were getting no increase otherwise. And then, uh, health insurance, they looked for an 8% increase in each of the years. The first one, we implemented a little later, again, to try to fit within the 4.23, uh, total settlement calculation. So, uh, very, the same number that we've, of all the settlements you've seen, we've been trying to come in at 4.23. So if you have any questions, we have to answer those.
I might be asking you something you don't know, I apologize if I am.
Sure.
Um, do you know at all or have an idea about the percentage approval rate when voted on by the?
I didn't on this one. Um, sometimes they do. I know this group actually looked at it twice. But I don't know what the total approval was this last time around.
Okay, when you say looked at it twice, they voted on it twice?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first time it did.
First time it did not pass. The second time, they needed to get some clarification on a few items and they were pretty surprised, their negotiation team. But, um, they, you know, talked through some of the issues so that people fully understood it.
How many employees does this represent, just ballpark, do you know?
Oh, boy, I should know that one. Um... I think it's under 50, Reggie, but I'd have to, I'd have to look. It's not a huge break.
It's not very good, okay.
In fact, I'll, I'll go back to my computer and look it up.
Oh, sorry.
I don't, don't have it in front of me.
Any other questions for Keith?
So, I just do, not related to this one, um, how many groups are aligned?
So we have, um, we have another group, uh, the food services group. They actually, we have a tentative agreement that we aren't really releasing any information on because they're meeting with their groups. They'll be setting up a meeting. Uh, we have clerical left. And then there's a, a group that's related services, a really small group, um, that we haven't, uh, they haven't reached out to us yet, but I'm, I'm assuming they will here shortly.
So food service clerical and related services.
Yeah. Right. So I'm anticipating next time you'll see at least nutrition or food services, because we, we just got done with that one.
Have you started meeting with clerical?
Yes. Yeah, we're probably pretty far along. We just have a few things we have to iron out.
And I'm assuming, just from my knowledge, that, um, you're targeting the same settlement for every person?
We're trying to come in at those numbers, yeah. And, but every, and every group has a few different needs in terms of what they're looking for. So, and that's some of the conversation, is trying to figure out what's, and prioritize what the largest need is in terms of where we need to try to supplement.
Alright. If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2018 to 2020 Service Employees International Union Local 284 Custodial Maintenance Collective Bargaining Agreement as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Okay, I'm going to take it. I'm going to give it.
Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries.
Lot of hard work, so thank you.
Now we will call up, we're on item number 10 here, new business discussion items. World's Best Workforce and Achievement in Innovation Plan. We've got a couple of guests here, Ford and Christie. Tom?
Hello.
Hi.
How's everybody doing?
Good. How are you?
I'm great. I'm Ford, also their temporary data and testing supervisor this year. And this is Christie Warren, our equity team lead. And we also, and for this report, and this is a yearly report that we submit to the state to MDE. Nika Summer partnered with me on kind of the bulk of it. And she's, as you probably already know, she's amazing. So, I wish she was here too. She did a great, she did an amazing job partnering with me as well. And then Dave, I want to give him a lot of credit too. He's been doing this by himself for a number of years. And I'm really lucky that I have people helping me. So, he's been doing a great job to, he's been doing this by himself. So, this is our 2017-2018 report that we will be submitting to the Minnesota Department of Education later on this week. Here are the components of it, so this is kind of broken down. This gives you kind of an overview or an outline of this whole presentation here. Part A is the world's best workforce. It has been part of this presentation for quite a while. And then part B is the achievement and integration part, which is the equity part of it that's been added this year to this report for every district that has that. So, the first part of this is equitable access to excellent teachers. Within our district, Shakopee currently has 42% diversity among our students. That's right from the MDE report card. We have an equity team, and we're constantly trying to improve and update our hiring process so that we can have more and more teachers that look like, like the students that they are teaching.
Yeah, Ford, I'm gonna jump in with a question already. And you may not know this, maybe Dave you do. The 42% when I read this prior to the meeting surprised me. For some reason, I had in my head we were around 35 or 36. It seems like it took a?
That's pretty much.
No, I'm talking about in general. So, this number, I'm trying to ask if that number represents a significant change year over year? Do we have a spike? Are we counting it differently at all?
Can you hear us, Ford?
Hold on, hold on. I know, but this is his first.
No pressure, no pressure.
Mr. Viagin is passing.
So, no pressure, Ford.
Yeah.
Get it right.
That's right. It's, it's been a gradual change over time. This comes right off of the MDE report card that we look at quite a bit. It's a really great resource too, anytime you want to look up anything that has to do with test scores, demographics, and things like that.
And the only thing I'd add to that, and I don't know if this is what you were alluding to, but we used to report five ethnic groups of white, black, Hispanic, Asian Pacific Islander, and American Indians. And now there's seven. And so, there's two or more races, and they split out. Was it Asian and Hawaiian Pacific Islander are separate groups? Now, the others are the same. And there's actually great, there are some additional requirements for us to collect even within that. If you, and Christie might need to help you a little bit as well, but, so you're asking if it?
I just want to know, if last year was a 36%, and there's a 6% bump. Workup was 41, and it really didn't change. It just, in my head, it didn't have us quite over that 40% threshold.
Something we have to look out for.
His answer looks good. It's correct.
Before, are you gonna talk further on hiring practices, or is this?
This is, this is what we're submitting, but I, we?
Well, I just want to, if I am not mistaken, I know that we work hard as a district every year to try to hire the best possible staff. But if I'm not mistaken, is it 4% of licensed teachers are? Statewide are diverse? And then approximately like 1.7 of administrators are diverse? Something, yeah. So, while I applaud the effort, I want, I would love, I want everybody to understand that we're all, I mean, every district is fighting for the best of the best. And the pool is pretty small, so.
We had a meeting earlier this week to where we actually have the district, the district advisory council meeting, and that was one of the questions that we brought up. And we had a really good discussion too around different hiring practices and maybe some ways that we could hire more diverse staff. But like you said, it's, you know, 4% of licensed teachers in the state of Minnesota are not white. And so, it's, you know, kind of, it's very competitive to try to hire more diverse staff.
Now, is the new licensing system and the relaxation of the criteria is that hopefully going to enable more, more candidates to come in the pool, or not?
I don't know, I don't know if that's the purpose of it or not, but, I mean, if it relaxes it, they would relax it for everybody. So, my, my guess is that it wouldn't change the overall percentage that much.
I think colleges are looking at figuring out how to grow and to build their own programs and to grow your own, looking at programs in the school districts, I mean, grow your own kind of models, whether you take pairs of staff and grow them into teachers and partner with colleges or looking here as our academies, looking, can we grow our own within our academies and kids that are coming through Shakopee and Haddon? So, I think we're, I think districts now have to become more creative to work with colleges to figure out how do we say that education's a great, is a great field to go into? And so, that's, I think we're, we're, it's a tough, teaching is a tough, tough job. And so, oftentimes, not the greatness of teaching comes out, but the more of the challenges and how tired and things that teachers are challenged with. So, we have to really keep singing why, why you go into teaching and that everybody has to go through teaching first, so, to get to where they're gonna go, go through a school door first. And so, we have to really, I think, sing the praises of what teaching is and how great it is.
So, just so you know, we have that grow your own grant with Norman Dale. And so, we are putting in a pathway for, for our students to encourage our students to go into the profession, especially our diverse students. And then, we haven't yet got off the ground the paraprofessional piece, but it's a piece that we're in talks with Norman Dale about.
Does, it's, you know, it's interesting, this is the state saying you've got to report this, but does the state actually provide us any data on the collegiate programs, you know, in the state? Or does Department of Education federally say this is how the schools of education are lining up? Because that's the pool we're going in. And if that pool hypothetically is shrinking, that makes it even more difficult. It's one thing to say it's 4% currently, but that's people who graduated already. It's people coming through the system. Do we know anything like that? Does the state provide us any data?
That's a great question.
Of course not. Why would they provide us data if they want us to measure it? Classic government.
I thought it was interesting what you guys reported from the advisory council as well. That was that the, the parents or the community members in their businesses where they work are going through the same challenges you're dealing with. So, I think you were part of that conversation.
Yeah, it was. It was a really, it was, it was an enlightening conversation. Hopefully, we can take some of the points and grow your own heart was really powerful for me. You know, listening to Ray talk about how, you know, kids of color, when they're coming up through school, they don't see teachers that look like them. And so, it may not be, it may not be just innate for them to go, "Oh, I could be a teacher." Because they just, so we have to change that mindset somehow, starting very young. Because obviously, there's a ton of potential out there. We just gotta figure out how to capture it.
I agree. Anything else from that slide? All right. Another part of world's best workforce is that all students are ready for school. So, we had a goal that was set previously, 80% of our kindergartners would be proficient on three out of four benchmarks when they come in. And you can see those four at the bottom there. Currently, 70% of our kindergarten students came in meeting three of those four benchmarks. But we're gonna be working, especially with Christie, now that she's the CFC principal, trying to really combine our efforts so that when they do get to kindergarten, we are seeing more of that growth. Another piece is all students in third grade achieving great level literacy. That's a huge factor in students' future success. If at the end of third grade, you are proficient at reading, you're four times more likely to graduate on time than if you are not proficient at reading at the end of third grade. So, that's another one that the world's best workforce really tries to push towards is having that early literacy. And you can see our goal there as well as the trend that's, that's happening right now. And we're gonna continue with a very similar goal in the future.
Can I, can I ask you a question on the left, the kindergarten side? Sorry, it didn't pop in my head fast enough. I'm wondering if we keep any numbers on our kids that attend our preschool programs versus kids who attend other preschool programs? Because I know that we try to align as much with kindergarten as possible. So, would you say, would it be safe to say, or do you keep numbers one? And would that number be higher if you just looked at the kids that attended stepping stones?
I think we have to look at it both ways because we have so many competition with all the privates. So, I think we have to keep track on that piece too. But I think what I'm finding at Central is that, given the various leaders that have come through, everybody's done something a little bit more unique. And I haven't been able to pinpoint that. So, Ford and I have been working, we have a meeting set with Nancy, to get on board. What are the numbers? Do we know? We know that we keep track of kids that are going transitioning in, but we don't follow them past that. So, schools get a folder that have all of their report cards, their skills checklist, all the different things that they had gone through at Central. But we don't, from what I can find, and maybe Dave knows differently, we don't have a specific to say that, you know, these four-year-olds that went into our kindergartens, they know this, that, or the other thing. So, that's what we're trying to develop. I think it's important. And that's also gonna help us at Central to just say, are we a program that is meeting the needs and getting kids really ready for kindergarten? Or, you know, are we kind of mediocre and where do we need to push?
You're saying you are developing a tool to engage that?
Yes.
Because that's a great question. I would love to know that going forward as much as we can.
Yeah.
Because you're right, it would either validate that we had a great program or hey, there's places we can improve.
Yeah.
Things we can learn. That's what we're really good at.
I think the good news is that our, we use a standards-based report card that can be pulled in if in a campus. So, we can, it's not, is the data there? It's how to aggregate the data and get it all systematic and then analyze that data. So, it's working again, step one, identifying the four-year-olds this year. And then we'll be, you know, kind of figuring out an assessment tool that makes sense for students and that can meet our parents aware. That's the other thing that we're kind of working at Central right now.
Great.
Another piece that we have talked about too is, we have some students that are at stepping stones like two days a week.
Oh, yeah.
Some are every day, and some are all day. And so, it kind of works that out too. How much of an impact are we having on that one there?
For sure, all-day fours, we should be watching in our half-day, five-day-a-week fours. I think that's a huge component that we'll be able to get good data from. I think when you get into two days a week versus three days a week or an hour and a half, that gets a little bit trickier. But there's still basics that teachers have to meet and the kids have to, you know, show growth towards wherever they come in.
All right. And then this is the third grade slide again. Any questions about third grade?
Do we, on both these two slides, do we set the goals or are the goals given to us by the state?
We set the goals, and then the state has a rubric for us, and then they give us feedback on the goals. Like, were they specific enough, you know, measurable, attainable, things like that?
Well, because we admittedly, you reported this, we're falling a little short. But, you know, I wonder sometimes, and it's probably good to be aggressive with the goals, but, you know, you can sandbag, and I'm glad we're not doing that. But it says we still have to work with growth. But at least we're setting the goals.
Yeah. Well, and I would like to point out that even though we obviously haven't yet achieved this goal that we set for ourselves, we're still, you know, 6.5% above the state. So, we're doing, we're doing well. We obviously want to do better, but we're doing well.
If you look at our demographics too, again, on that MDE report card, we are so similar to the rest of the state. So, when we do compare, like, there are some districts that compare themselves to the state just they have a baseline, but they should be performing way above or way below the state based on demographics. Our demographics are so close that the state actually is a really good measuring bar for us. And the fact that we are achieving above the state speaks really well to how well to our teachers and our staff.
So, you're saying like a Chan-Hassan? That's interesting. I've never thought about it that way. Like a Chan-Hassan, which only has, what, 9% or something? I'm sorry, I don't know what it is, but it's pretty low. This measure wouldn't be as apples-to-apples.
Right. Yeah, so I have a friend, a principal, he's in, out in the middle of nowhere, out by Marshall, Minnesota. And he's a principal of the high school there. Last year, they were like a blue ribbon school. They, I mean, they achieved like 90-some percent over here. But they still use that as a baseline because they still want to be, they, instead of, you know, achieving 22% above the state proficiency, they're gonna shoot for 25%. So, it still is a nice baseline for them. But when we look, when we're comparing the state, it's really nice for us because it is apples-to-apples. So, each year, you can see if we're above the state, our teachers are doing some great stuff. Another piece is the closing, the achievement gaps between student groups. We are gonna change how we address this goal in the future. Right now, we have all those groups, and we're using a weighted, a weighted average to see what the gap is between. So, here, we're trying to get smaller and smaller numbers. Do you want to close that gap while still maintaining, while still continuing to do well with the, with the opposite group? So, in the future, what we're gonna do is we're gonna be, really, instead of including pre-reduced, special education, LPL, because to try and move that whole group is really hard because you're moving a whole lot of groups in the same direction. So, what we're gonna try and do in the future, starting next year, would be to look and focus in on students of color to try to see if we can close that gap specifically. But for now, this is the goal of the pad, and so we're gonna continue with for this year. Another piece is all students career in college ready. And that number's gonna look really bad right away because it's 31% of our students. But if you look at the goal itself, what we're trying to do is measure how many of our kids are going in, meeting benchmarks in all four areas of the ACT test. So, you're talking about a really well-rounded student to meet all four of those. It's not just two or four, three, but like, meeting all four of those. They have to really be a solid student, and a highly achieving student. So, the year before, we had 29% of our students from the 2017 graduating cohort. And in the 2018 graduating cohort as juniors, 31% of them did. So, we actually met our goal there.
Is there a state comparable with this number, or is this our own?
There is, but I don't know it.
Oh, damn. You should just make something up. Come on, Ford. It'd be interesting to have a point. For being at that level in all four areas, and that's pretty well-rounded, pretty high-achieving student.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting to see if this goal said three of four or something. And what would that, would that 31% now be 55% or?
Because that student's still gonna do it really well.
Right.
And so, that would be successful.
For some of us, maybe we did really poorly on the science like 2013 ago.
Those benchmarks are the ones that ACT.
Yeah. Yeah, so math, science, reading, and, how do I imagine? Math, science, reading, and English.
He's smiling at me, yeah.
I just want to say that, that I know the state average is probably a little bit higher than us on that. I will say though, I think it's an important, this is a challenging goal, and I think it's important for us to keep pushing on this because, to me, this is one of the things that's the most personally meaningful for students and for our families because it gets kids into the college of their choice. In some cases, it impacts scholarships, that kind of thing. And so, it's important for us to keep trying to push for all four benchmarks.
And do these benchmarks change if the student takes it in their junior year versus their senior year?
So, Dave, I don't know if you pulled it off the junior data or the data in the senior report because we get our data from when we test all of our kids in their junior year. But then the ACT also produces a report for us for all the graduates from the graduating class. And in that case, it's the last test they took.
But if your question was, if it's a 21 in a subject, it's 21. It doesn't change whether you're a junior or a senior.
Now, at one point, I know that some students, because of the math configuration, really didn't have the math they needed to reach that benchmark if they took it early in their junior year. Have we changed that math sequence, or is that still? There are gonna be some kids who haven't even had the?
There will be some kids that are still in the midst of taking the math class that would help them do well in their, on the ACT.
However?
That'd be the regular sequence for our juniors.
Okay. However, when we change to physics first for our ninth graders?
We'll see.
So, so that will be next year's?
That's this year's biology students.
But not this, not this data? It'll be next year's data, right?
Well, those juniors are in biology right now, and they'll take the ACT in February, so.
So, yeah. But what I'm saying is, when he's here, the next time he gives the presentation, that?
Correct.
Data will be?
Available.
Available.
And I think we, it also, was supposed to impact the MCA testing, I think, a little bit more directly than this because these kids might have had biology anyway, even without the change sequence. So, it's really an MCA thing, I think?
I would say it actually is more of an ACT. I would say it actually is more of an A C T and that we would anticipate and hope it has a positive impact on the M C As as well.
You're just really removed from this role.
Does this figure out a few other things to do?
Too much now.
When it says 2017 graduating or 2018 this coming, this year, is that inclusive of all students through the SHC system, including Takata? So if they graduate from Takata, they're, they're counted in this cohort?
Yeah. And he, well, so any, if this was the class of two thousand eight, so what data poll is this? Is this off the junior report or the senior?
This should be juniors that are graduating in twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen? Do you understand what I'm saying?
So we get the, we get the numbers the year before, or we get the numbers the year after. So this would be from spring of twenty seventeen for the graduating, the juniors from twenty seventeen, who are, who will be, or who were seniors in twenty eighteen. So they, the data's like a year behind because they compiled and sent it to us, is what I believe.
Irrespective of the timing, does it include Takata graduates as well?
I believe so, yes.
And since prior.
As long as they took the A C T.
Well, okay. But prior to Takata, those students went someplace else and they wouldn't have been captured in this data set.
They've got a nice.
No, if they went someplace else instead of Takata, another, another ALC program. Now they're being captured in the SHC.
The other thing that's changed is the A C T, I think, was not required for everybody.
Right.
And it, now it's required that you offer it.
Right.
And we're offering it and basically everybody's taking it.
Yeah.
And so that changes things too, whether they view themselves as college-bound students or not. And then as far as this poll, I think it's something we want to double check. It could be that what somebody, Nancy or Ford was talking about, the score that gets reported for the class when they graduate is the last time they took it. For many kids, that in-class A C T they take is the only time they take it. For other kids, that may be the ones who really do view themselves as college, that they'll take it again and again and again. So I think that number is really a combination of kids who took it their junior year in school. And so some of them, that's the score. For others, it's, I took it again later in the year or I took it in the summer or I took it at the beginning. And like, it would be the last test they took. Not the highest, not all the one, but the last one they took is what I believe that is. But we, we should all check that.
Yeah, we can. Another piece is all students graduating. So it's the first set of high school students that graduate four years. The goal was set in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen to get to ninety percent by seventeen, eighteen. And again, those, those results come in February from the state. So those results will come still. We're, we're pretty confident that we're going to be right up around that eighty percent again, even a little bit lower than that. So we're, we're not going to meet that goal for ninety percent by seventeen, eighteen. Going forward, what we're going to do, though, we set a new goal now that this one is done. So what we're going to try to do, or we're going to look at doing is change the goal so that the high school itself has a four-year graduate goal and that Takata has a seven-year graduate goal because they keep track of them. They have to seven years per cohorts. The idea being, if a student does go to Takata, then they're, they're going there because they're probably already kind of credits. And so let's not, you know, kind of make it more difficult than we have to. Let's, and let's give them credit for going there and then finishing in five years or in six years or seven years. So that's what, that's what we're going to look at doing in the future to make it a more, more reasonable goal or a more, a goal that actually aligns with what we're doing.
So if a student starts as a freshman at the high school.
Yep.
And then falls behind and goes to Takata.
Yep.
It's possible that they would be a zero on the four-year at the high school, but then they would be.
A seven-year.
It could be a one out of one. But they don't get removed from the calculation of four-year.
Correct.
I think it, they'd be counted in our district rate and they'd be counted in the Takata rate. If you're a student there, you wouldn't be using your term as, did not graduate the high school.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're not clearing it out from the high school so it artificially raises the high school rate, if that makes sense.
So maybe look at a district-wide four-year goal and then a Takata-specific seven-year goal. So we're making sure we're counting every kid in the district for the four-year graduation.
That's seven years for Takata. Does that, does that include or built in? If, we talked with, when Eric was here about, you know, there are students that can't get in there. You know, they're waiting because we just don't have the space for them. How, is that, is seven enough?
Seven is as far as the state continues to, after seven.
It'd be interesting to see how many, you know, how many years are ahead of just because we don't have the space or the programming to be able to get them in there. There's the influence there.
Do these numbers include, assuming not, but do they include transition kids, students?
Like the students that are special education?
Yeah, they go for seven years?
Yeah.
And that was part of the reason why they added that seven-year rate as well.
Oh, okay. So will you be pulling numbers on that as well?
Specifically on special education students that are transitioned.
Yeah. So if you're going to pull Takata, are you going to pull transition as well?
I hate to blab on it, but it's definitely something.
My kids are paying attention.
It's, just because it's not a goal that we do for World's Best Workforce doesn't mean it's something we can't focus on as well. So that's great. Yeah, that's a great recommendation.
Can I ask a question? Why wouldn't the state? I mean, I get it. I get that the goal is to graduate in four years. But there are a lot of kids at Takata who are working really hard and they graduate in four and a half or five and five and a half and they, you know, they continuously work toward it. Isn't the goal to graduate?
And yes, and Takata was recognized as one of the highest, seven-year grad rates.
ALCs.
Their alternative schools in the state. So there was recognition that that's an important number. This one did differentiate and said differentiated goals around area learning centers versus regular high schools. But I think there's a recognition that it's probably not logical that it's the same measure, to your point. I think this is just other things I've thought of. Why, why at college, we almost accept? And on the four years of the deal.
We accept five.
In college, we say four and a half, five, whatever, finish. And it's, it's good. And here, it's not, we, we look at it differently. We want to graduate kids in four years. That's what we want to do. But if a kid finishes, to your point, that's great.
That's great.
We want them to, especially some kids who struggle. So. And there's not tuition here like there is in college.
Right.
We don't want to go seven years in college.
So then we're going to go into the second part. And this is the part that was added to World's Best Workforces here. And that's the achievement and integration part. We have two goals with that. And because we're just joining it with World's Best Workforce, we're definitely still in the works on how to best do that. For this year, we have a separate math and separate reading goal for our goal number one. The overall achievement gap, we want it to decrease from twenty-eight point two to twenty-five point seven. And this, again, is with an overall group, including, including pre-reduced and E L and special education as well as students of color. Again, really tough number to move. We're, we're holding pretty steady. So we're not necessarily meeting our goal, but we are, we're, we're definitely, that gap's not widening. Certainly not significantly widening. And then G, my goal number two is a consistent attendance rate. So the way that the, the way that S O, which is the new state legislation, education, the way that they measure consistent attendance is if you are a student and you attend ninety percent or more of your school days for that school year, you're a consistent attender. If you attend less than ninety percent, then you are not a consistent attender. And so the way that this, the way that S actually measures it is not just this great, what percent of your kids are showing up every day. It's a, how many of your students or what percent of your students are attending consistently or attending ninety percent or more of the time. For this, what we're going to try to do is really focus in on students that identify as black, Native American, Hispanic, Latino, and try to really increase the number of, the percentage of consistent attenders in our district with those specific groups.
And is there a program in place to do that? That seems like a tough one.
Yep, it is. We have an equity team. And I think that's one, that's definitely one of their.
And that is something they discuss regularly is who's not showing up and what can we do about it?
We have been building relationships and trying to reengage students in school who maybe are not. Or maybe they've had a difficult life situation or, you know, something has happened really difficult in their life. How can we reengage and get back to school so that they're attending consistently? Because again, that's another factor that determines students and how successful they're going to be is how much schools they're attending. It's hard to learn when you're not there. So Ford.
Oh, and I think at high school, the Check and Connect program that we've started, right now it's with the Freshman Academy. But we're really trying to use that as a, as a way to, we're checking in. Because the number one thing with attendance is we have to know who's not attending, right? So that they don't just fall through the cracks. So I think elementary's do a really good job because it's the law, right? So there's a system in place that says if you're not attending, people get notified. There's letters. Middle school, right, there's the phone calls, but that's where you start to lose a little bit in high school. So I think that we're, we're, I think we know that it's a huge problem. And so it's really getting to know who is not attending, checking in with them, creating systems that, that they have adults. So it's not necessarily the teachers they see every day, but rather people that volunteer that want to be the Check and Connect mentors in Check and Connect. So we're starting with Freshman Academy, hoping to grow it, but then looking at how, how reliable, how valuable is it? Do we bring it down to the middle schools or do we expand it up in high school or both? Can we do both?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So would that be the Check and Connect? Is that, are you focusing on?
Attendance?
No. Are you focusing on these three groups? Because I feel like that could be something that all of the groups could do.
Yes.
Okay.
Check and Connect right now, and Ray is in charge of that program. And we're just getting the update from him this, end of this week. They are, it's for all kids.
Okay.
It's for all kids that are not attending or who have some engagement struggles that they see already those two things. So there's a data collection. The academies meet and the teachers all come together and talk. He takes it further, has his mentors work, identify those students and work directly. I think we, as we get into the data, we're going to look at who are the kids that we're targeting? And do they, do they end up fitting into one of the subgroups that we're, that we're focusing on for our achievement goal?
So Ford, if I can, unless you're going to respond to that topic, I'm going to say similar to the question I asked before. These two goals, did we as a district say, okay, we're going to look at the achievement gap in math and reading and the cumulative or consistent attendance rate? Or those, the state says you got to do these and you just need to figure out what the rates are?
We set these.
So we picked these as goals? Okay. So we could have picked something else. And the thought is, we're happy with these as goals for our achievement integration. And at least at this point, we're going to continue with these as our goals.
Yes.
Yeah.
Especially because, because it's being added to World's Best Workforce, we're saying, all right, this is a good chance for us to kind of
Yeah.
start fresh and just really go after these things because we feel like this is what's going to help, help our students close the gap and be successful in the future.
And that's, that's what I want to hear is because I'm relying on, and trusting frankly, you guys as educators to say, these are the measures that we should be looking at because they move the needle versus X, Y, Z goal that we could have selected. But you guys are saying, this is what we want to focus on and we think is most important. And that's great. That's what I want to hear.
Yeah. We have, we have an achievement gap, opportunity gap, however you want to name it. We have. And so we, we absolutely have to start talking about it and saying, what are we doing to make sure that all of our students, especially our groups that are not making it, are, are moving forward in, in the right direction? We're really closing that gap.
Do we ever talk to other, I mean, you're a perfect example. Do we ever talk to other districts who have been wrestling with this? You know, is there, are there? I don't know. I mean, are there best practices out there that you can, you've got it?
No. I think from my previous district, we struggled with that all the time. Conversation was repetitive every year. Some schools continued to be well above ninety percent proficient. And the other group was, continued to be not proficient. It's, it's something that every district wrestles with. And what we have to start to look at is what are the things that are going to help kids connect to school? It's my belief that when kids are connecting, they can learn from anybody. But if we don't connect, we don't understand and we don't get to know who's in front of us and meet them where they're at, then we're missing a huge opportunity to, to have them expand their, show their potential. Because every child comes in the door, I believe, ready to go and wants to learn. But, but we need educators that are connecting with every child. And that's a tough job because you have, you know, thirty kids in your classroom, twenty kids in your classroom. But either way, every single person comes in with their own needs and it's one person to try to figure that out. So it's really increasing that rigor overall and, and pushing kids to own their learning and see beyond their potential, right? To see that there's more than just either elementary, middle school, or high school and college. Like where they stand and where they fit into life.
One thing specifically we're implementing this year is something that Dave created, which is a dropout early warning system. He created it on a spreadsheet with his buddy and they, it's a, it's this really cool way to try to see which kids might be falling through the cracks and try to track and see how things are going. And then all of a sudden, if a kid falls off, you notice it right away. And the academies are working on that. He has teams as we speak to really try to do a nice job of catching those kids early so that we don't lose them before it's too late. And that's for all kids.
Is this K twelve or is this high school?
This would be.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's ten through twelve.
You mean it says what it says?
Yeah.
And this is a new account, is it North Star?
North Star.
I always forget, I always goof that name up. But this is part of that new accountability. This statistic amongst folks I've seen is, is sometimes the least well-understood. What they're saying, if you look at the twenty seventeen, eighteen data for these groups of students, and you said this early on Ford, but sixty-six point nine percent of those students have attended more than ninety percent of the school days in a year. Meaning that thirty-three point one percent of students have attended ninety percent or less of the school days. It's not an attendance rate by day or for a year or something like that. And that's been misunderstood kind of across the state.
We're, we're hoping, and Ford kind of alluded to it, that the academy structure will help at the high school. As you have a group of teachers with a common group of kids. And if, if we're getting the data to them accurately and they know how to use it, that we're looking at them together as, we, we need to go after this group of kids collectively, which it would not have been like that before. So we're evolving how those teams work right now and what data tools we're giving them. And so it'll, it will take a little while, but that structure is in place to specifically find who the kids are that are attending the least or struggling the most academically or behaviorally and then do something to go after it. So.
And I would think that the academy model, sorry Scott, lends itself to this better than a school of thirty-two hundred kids.
Yeah.
Where you're just one of thirty-two hundred. Here at least, you have some of the same teachers year after year. You're right, the teachers are talking amongst themselves. They're part of the academy team. I mean, that's exactly why we've gone down this path. And this just happens to be a way that perhaps we can move that particular needle.
That was, that was one of my biggest takeaways from the Ford N T L and the Nashville study. I think their average rate of attendance, the different stat, that's how many kids are in seats on a day. But it went from something like seventy-eight percent to ninety percent in a three-year span of giving kids the choice, giving kids the ownership of their own academic career. Made them want to come to school more.
Well, the other thing too is, the teaming is great with the teachers, but the relationship with the business community, having the business community stand up and say, this is, this is what this means. If you're not coming here to school right now, how can I as an employer have faith that you're going to come to work? And there's a direct correlation here that is bigger than, you know, than, that we. So I think the business community reinforcing that messaging whenever they get the opportunity to do it, to really, you know, I can, especially when the unemployment rate is as low as it is, it's a big deal. It is probably one of the single biggest retention factors that I personally deal with. It's just people.
Well, not only that, but like my senior, you know, he's been here for, he's been in the school for a few years. He has never, ever come home and talked about projects he's working on and the things that he's doing. And he's coming home and he's talking about them and telling me, and I, and I know we're only in the first semester of the academies, but clearly whatever the teachers are doing, or, I mean, he's kind of a high flyer, but it's engaging him. It's, he's talking about it. He's interested. He's learning in a different way. And, and I, if school is interesting and authentic and relevant, I would think that that would capture our kids too.
And the thing that, when I meet with equity team, that they continue to talk about is attendance or engagement or lack thereof continue to live in kind of an administrative world, right? So administrators talked about the same group of kids that were not attending or not. But now it's teachers saying like, hey, and so they're the ones kind of creating that and they're running that engine. That I think is the best thing you can do because when you have teachers on board and recognizing who is and who is not and coming together to team so it doesn't feel like such an alone kind of journey. That's what continues to come up in our equity conversations is that they're just taking off and identifying kids and volunteering, I'll take and I'll watch. And that's the excitement, I think, that is really connecting our kids and more kids to their, to their education, like you're talking about. Yeah.
So we'll expect that number to be like eighty? So we'll expect that number to be like eighty?
Yeah.
How about seventy?
She says that her last.
And then the, the last part of the World's Best Workforce report is the way that this question is raised, it's specifically how have you partnered with other districts like in a very, very real way? This doesn't, we do a whole lot more than this, but this is just one of the final question that was on there. So that's all we, we responded with a couple of things that we, that we do that's specific to make sure that we're partnering with other districts.
We've done this World Cafe before, haven't we?
Yeah, yes.
It rings a bell and it's not just this year that we've done it.
Yeah, we're meeting with Jordan and another district this Thursday or Friday, I believe, to, to start this conversation again with a couple of districts. So we'll see. And I know that the college tours are continuing to go on and where kids are getting, going places and buses are completely filled to get kids out to colleges. So that's really exciting.
And this report will be submitted later this week to MDE. It's a requirement for all of us. And then there's a couple of hopeless thoughts as well, if you have any more questions about Equity Novia. Any other questions?
Excellent presentation. We've never had one quite like this. Thank you.
Well, everybody. And everyone else.
I want you to think you.
Tony, grab the tablet.
Finally, you have to say.
I think I've worked here, went into retirement a little bit.
I wasn't going to come up till I was old. Sarah, if you don't mind, just bring me that hand up. It's the elementary.
Take a seat.
This is your moment, Tony.
Ooh, look at that.
So Nancy Tool, Director of Teaching and Learning, and I'm very excited to introduce, if you haven't had a chance to meet Zach yet, Zach Iopas, who is our second, well, really Teaching and Learning Supervisor. He is inheriting that awesome job of doing registration guide for the high school. He's heavily involved with our academy teams.
Yes, he is.
He's doing a great job. He likes, we like to say he's taken over for both Ed and Ryan Finkeng. We got a reduction there, but he's doing great. You were, Scott, we were a little worried there, Tony, we started taking.
I, I just had to give him off.
So we're going to just present sort of what's the proposed changes for academic programming at the elementary, middle, and high school for next year. And so typically what we've done, as you know, in the past, how our process has been is we meet with teacher teams in the fall and we determine what we want to propose to change in both our registration guides at middle school and high school, as well as any changes that we want to make at the elementary level too. And that all gets rolled up together and we talk with you about it because that's the kind of, that allows us to go ahead and make the changes in the registration guide, which as you know, starts very quickly after the first of the year. So this year, when I met with Jeff Priest, I just want you to know from a budget point of view, you know, the assumption that he has had is that the teaching and learning budget would basically stay the same as it was this previous year. So our department did work to make sure that our proposals that we're moving forward to tonight fit within those parameters. So when you take a look at elementary, the first thing that just sort of really stood out to me and I had to sit and think about for a while is the fact that our all-day K kids are going to fifth grade next year. So we are at the process of finishing this, this multi-year roll-up that we've done with following our all-day K kids. And so some work we're doing around K five and specifically fifth grade is that we're trying to work on more integrated units with reading, writing, and social studies. We're getting ready for new state standards in science and starting to take a look at our math programming as well. And specifically in fifth grade, we'll be finishing our adoption of our, of our STEM curriculum that we've been doing year by year by year with our Project Lead the Way Launch Curriculum. And then also finishing our standards-based report card system that we've been doing by year by year as well. Art has, is in the process of starting the first of a three-year plan to modify and revise their programming to meet some of the new state art standards. And one of the neat things that they're doing that we're excited about is, they call it their roll-down plan. And that's because they're going to start with modifications in grades four and five first because of some significant change at the secondary level in art programming, especially with what's called TAB practices. And that's teaching artistic behavior. It really gives kids a lot more voice and choice in both the medium that they work with and the product they deliver to show that they've mastered the skill that the art department is working on. This matches very well with changes that our middle school teachers and our high school teachers have made as well and really starts to encourage more of that voice of students choosing kind of their artistic expression in order to meet those standards. So pretty excited about that. If you move on to, if you're looking at the documents on your, your iPad or on the screen, the next is kind of a summary document that just shows what's happening, six, twelve. And you can see the first column talks about new courses, middle column is review, revised courses, and then finally eliminated courses. And you can see that a lot of the work that we had been doing, for example, like science with some new scope and sequence and some other things, we're, we've kind of finished out that work for the secondary. When you see, I don't want you to panic, but you see science, as you know, we're doing algebra-based physics in ninth grade. So it means we no longer need the eleventh and twelfth grade physics course. There is still an upper level physics course options for students who want to pursue that. It's an ATE physics C class. So just want to clarify that. And another piece with working with our administrators, our numbers have not been running very well at the middle level for German one and two. And so after some thought and some discussions, we decided that German should just be a nine, twelve program like our Japanese program. We actually think that will increase its sustainability because we won't be splitting kids across three buildings. We saw a real positive for Japanese when the ninth graders went over there and it was just a nine, twelve program. We're hoping for the same thing for our German program. And then you see that we're continuing our journey with our programs of study. And if you take a look at, and I don't know if we want to pop this up or not, maybe not, but if you take a look at the grids, they've been updated. Maybe we should just look at those quick. Sarah, thank you. We, we have the best industry councils. We had another really great fall with our industry councils and we've made some revisions in our sequence to try to align better with the work that we're doing to prepare kids for, you know, kind of post-secondary. So arts and communication has had some changes and you can kind of follow the list in terms of those pieces. The one thing I'd point out on the grids is if you remember, anything in black is a course that either exists or if it has an asterisk by it, it's one of our new courses for nineteen, twenty. Light blue means it's work that we're still considering. We're very close now to finishing the, what we call is our capstone or advanced course. And we are going to be putting a couple of those into place for next year, but the majority of that work will be finished for the twenty twenty-one school year, which is when those freshmen that we have now will need that in their junior and senior year to complete their graduation requirement for a program of study. And so you can kind of just see the list there. I don't think I'll point out anything specific there.
Nancy, can I ask a general question? Back on the very first sheet you showed, there's a series of new courses, which is exciting.
Yep.
Am I safe in, in assuming that, that the industry councils have had a voice in that process in their creation, the curriculum, the sequencing, as you talked about? I mean, that's why we created and that's why we have a meeting regular. So all of these have, shall we say, a business or a community touch, some heavier than others, but that's, that's an accurate statement.
That is absolutely accurate.
That's great.
In fact, even to the point where they, in, it's not unusual for them to actually help us create units at this point.
Better.
Yeah.
How many total industry council members would you say we have?
Oh, sorry. So the list is much, you know, and Angie Wickholm tells me this is normal from the chamber, but we probably have at least thirty or more on the books. But I would say what we get in attendance on a regular basis is more in that area of ten to fifteen.
Per academy.
Per academy.
Per academy.
Yeah, per academy. Yeah.
That's amazing. And these are all local business individuals who are helping to guide our curriculum?
Yeah. And we have people who have actually served for almost four years now. And then we get new people all the time too. But we have faithfuls who have been with us for a very long time.
That's incredible.
Yeah. The other thing we wanted to mention, and Zach's going to speak to that, Zach is also our CAPS coordinator. We have some kind of exciting news there. We didn't, we weren't able to run our digital design program this past year, or we didn't have sufficient numbers. And we also had an issue with the host site too. Shutterfly, which has always been a huge supporter of ours, their design team actually was moved to California in the middle of the last year that we were there. And so it wasn't the ideal location for our design students to be there. And so we just finished up kind of where they're going to be for the fall of nineteen. So Zach's going to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so we rebranded our CAPS digital design program as CAPS Creative Media. And we just found our host site partner for first semester and that's going to be the Shaq Beadman Watson Sioux Marketing Department. And they have a full twenty-six-person team, creative teams, they have communications, people in video, graphic design, pretty much everything that we've been looking for, for that digital program. And because of the diverse things that they do, we feel like it's going to be a good fit for pretty much any kid in that arts and communication academy. And still open to anyone like all of our CAPS programs, but we just feel like it's going to be a really great fit. Carrie Anne has been over at the Sioux community, has been helping us out with lots of our arts and communication pathway. And we, we just met with her last week and got the final approval that we're good to go for our host site there. And we're, we're just excited for the opportunities that our kids are going to have because of the staff that they're going to be able to interact with on a daily basis over there. So it's exciting. We're hoping to get a lot of kids into that program for next year.
And have you thought at all about how to recruit some kids? I think of the three CAPS, it's the one that is least understood.
Yes.
So kids need to have more information before they can say, yes, I want to do this.
That's one of our goals. And we've talked to Carrie Anne over there about even trying to get some things together for our SABR showcase, which I says is one of the upcoming important dates and being able to just get some information out to kids. Our current CAPS kids in the business and healthcare program, they've actually brought it up to us that they would like to get into classes at the high school and just let the other students know what's happening in the CAPS program. And this is my first year seeing the program up close like I am this year. And to see where kids come in on the first day when we're all together, to where they're at, even now, two and a half months in, they're interviewing for internships and doing things that I don't know if I could have done when I was seventeen or eighteen years old. And it's, it's really amazing to see the growth through the program. So we even have the kids wanting to go out and let other students know about that. So we're in the process of figuring out how we're going to recruit to make sure all our programs are healthy for next year.
Great. So quickly, the title of it, CAPS Creative Media. So I have a son who I think would love this program, but if you say the word creative to him, he shuts down immediately because he just doesn't believe he's creative.
It's scary.
It's scary. It's a scary word. If you don't, are we sure that's the right word we want to use?
We've.
So this is, you can't imagine the amount of time that our teachers take talking about titles. I mean, we even drive the industry council members crazy with it, talking about titles. So I, I get what you're saying. We actually got feedback from kids that digital wasn't a good word either because they couldn't see necessarily themselves in that range either. So I, I.
Our, our biggest goal with the name change was to get something beyond kids thinking they're just doing that graphic design and they're just sitting designing things on, on the computer. Because when we go over to the Sioux Community Marketing Department, they're going to have people in communications. So that's where you start seeing that mass communication, media messaging and design. Those courses coming in that would funnel you into CAPS. Same with the media production and recording, they have people doing those things and that could funnel you into the CAPS program. So we felt like that at least gave a pathway for multiple kids throughout the entire academy to see themselves having that as maybe a capstone or advanced course experience if they choose that in their schedule.
We'll take that feedback, but it's, it's a tough one to figure out. That was what came out of industry council and articulation conversations, that they thought that was the best way to go.
We do spend a lot of time thinking about titles.
Yeah. And we'll note too, because it's new to the guide as well as to the grids, that part of the discussion with our teacher academy teams this year was could the CAPS program be a substitute for the advanced course for some of the programs of study? And the answer is yes. And it kind of identifies what programs of study it would be a substitute for. So in some cases it works like for the business, why it kind of worked for every, all of them for others, like in health science it did for three of the four, but not the biomedical one because of the technical stuff. So, you know, so there's some of that trade-out is there for kids then who are willing to invest in more of that immersion experience. I will say, my head about exploded when we met with Carrie Anne last. You can't imagine, they have full-time web developers, they have everything in a marketing department. They were talking about what they're doing with the museum that's going to open in July of two thousand nineteen on eighty-three. The amount of opportunities for our kids because they serve, I don't know if people understand how large the tribal organization is, but they serve so many different organizations within their organization that the opportunities are going to be amazing for our kids. So hopefully we're going to get it to Ron G.
I hope so.
Yeah. Then the other piece that I just wanted to mention is really just more of a guidance that I'd like to get from the board. We talked about this briefly last year, I think it was Reggie that brought it up, a little bit about some duplication of offerings that, that we have that also our Southwest Metro app offers as well. Right now, when you look at the registration guide, we have our list of offerings and at the back of the book, what the kids can sign up at the co-op, et cetera, is listed as well. And that's always been a really important partnership for us as we want it to continue. But we are in a situation now where there's three courses that are exactly the same as what the co-op offers. It's criminal justice and it's exploring the education and multicultural education because they're doing the Grow Your Own grant as well. And so we're recommending, but looking for feedback from you, that we just eliminate the offerings at the co-op, don't list the co-op offerings if we offer the exact same class. Everything else would be the same, the cosmetology and the Cisco and all that kind of stuff would all stay in there. Those are things we don't offer. But it's come up with our teacher teams that does it make sense for us to show the exact same course that the co-op shows? And so I don't know if you have any feedback for us on that, but our thought was when there is an actual duplicate, we would just list the course that's on site at the, at the high school. Any questions or concerns about that?
That makes total sense, especially it could be in-class time versus on-the-bus time.
Right. Right.
I hundred percent agree. Totally agree.
Okay. Okay. So we can take notes for the guide. Then the last part we just wanted to mention, and this has been typical for us too, is you will electronically get the registration guides on the last day before the winter break, which is December twentieth, and be able to enjoy taking a look at that over break. We will come back to you at the first meeting in January, asking for your formal approval of both the guide and of these course changes at the same time. That's kind of been our tradition. Any questions about that?
No, but I'm looking at Kristi and Joe.
Yeah, I was going to say, you're going to be sent.
You can't wait.
Well, I guess if you've already thought of that, then you're making sure of copying them actually going forward is.
Yeah, and we have to make sure that you get the registration guides to both middle schools.
Yeah.
Don't remember until the thirty-third, cut them off.
Last year, my granddad is doing for big social studies project.
It's true, you will.
How to educate people.
Oh, it's awesome.
Something to read, I would agree.
Finally, I just want to actually say something to Tony and Scott and to Sean. I just want to personally thank you. I just want to personally thank you, the three of you, as well as Mary Romansky. It often saddens me that the outstanding work that the district has done by our staff, as well as our business and community partners that we just mentioned right now, is overshadowed by really terrible actions on the part of the former superintendent. And while I can completely sympathize with the community on their feelings of being upset by that, I really feel that it shouldn't overshadow the great work that is being done in the district. And I just want to really take a moment to recognize the work of the board, and I want to just say some of the things that we've done as a board before you leave. And I have to tell you, this list is not complete. It's only a partial list, it's the things I would say are the big things. All-day kindergarten is here today because of the board. One-to-one technology for not just our students, but our teachers as well. Middle school, as a former middle school administrator, to see us operating middle school really to meet the needs of adolescents is awesome. High school academy model, instructional coach model, our CAPS program, a passion of mine that I've had for a very long time. All the elective courses that have been completely redesigned six through twelve at the middle school and high school, so that it aligns and promotes true college and post-secondary preparedness. Avid young scholars. And I think one of the things that, for me, that's been most affirming is the amazing partnerships that we have fostered with our business community and the city and the county. To have seven major academy champions and lots of people involved in the Industry Council, it's amazing. This work would not have happened without the support of this board, and I just want to thank all three of you for making a difference in the lives of our students.
Here, here.
Of course, it happens because of teaching and learning. No, it happens because of a lot of people. So, thanks.
All right. Item eleven, new business action items, of which there are none. The board's favorite number twelve, others, are there any others?
We can recognize you guys in some capacity.
I don't know.
Well, I will take this moment to say it's been a pleasure to serve with the three of you for a number of years. Tony's a little bit shorter, but in terms of duration of the term is what I meant. But it's been wonderful serving with you, we've certainly experienced a lot, I'll just say it that way. But your tenacity, your dedication, your commitment to doing what's right for our kids is never wavered, never wavered. And you are to be committed for that. You've been missed, but your work will live on, and we look forward to your replacements. But you guys did a wonderful job in leadership positions as well. And Scott, you've served an incredibly challenging couple of years, and you're to be committed for that. Seriously committed. So thank you, each three of you.
I guess, as always, Reggie says it better than I can, but thank you all. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve with all three of you. And yeah, I'd hate to see the number of hours that Scott spent on the phone or meeting a person with lawyers in the last two years. And it's been a great experience, learning a lot from all of you, seeing your passion and your commitment to this community and the students, first and foremost.
I would echo both of them, and I would say, we have been on a journey that I'm sure most boards have never been on before. I can call it more like a roller coaster ride. And I can honestly say that there is nobody else I would have wanted to be on that ride with than the three of you. So thank you for taking that journey with us. We are a better board because of you sitting with us, so thank you. You'll be great with us.
As the newest member on the board, I could really sense from the very beginning that the tough times have brought you guys together and made you powerful and strong and thoughtful and everything that you do in your name, we're going to carry that on, keep on going. And everybody on the board has been so welcoming and so helpful, so you guys have that to look forward to. They're a very helpful group.
Tony, you got any words? No?
No.
Hello?
I always have words.
Hello?
My husband likes to joke a lot that there can't possibly be a board who has put in more hours than we have these past five years. The first year that I was on the board, we spent hundreds of hours trying to pass and ultimately failing a two-school referendum. The next year, we spent hundreds of hours trying to pass and ultimately passing a one-high school referendum. The next year, we spent hundreds of hours designing and building, not only architecturally, but also curriculum-wise in the academy model. The next year, we spent hundreds of hours. And in that year, we also had to do ultimately what is the most important role for us, and that's hiring a superintendent, which takes a lot of time. And then the fifth year, we have to do it again. I don't know what I'm going to do with my son moving forward. I have, this has been the hardest but most rewarding thing I've ever done in my life, and I am, I'm going to miss you guys terribly, and you make every handy phone calls for me, just to catch up. But the one thing I want to say is that, you know, my son sent me a text today, he said, "It's tonight, your last board meeting." And I said, "Yeah." And he said, "Mom, you need to be so proud of the work that you have done for Sam and Jake and all the students in Chalkapi," and that just broke me. But I am really, really proud of the work that we have done together as a team and with our administration and teachers. We have built a legacy, and we have weathered a storm together. And I am just so excited for the future of these kids. Thank you all.
All right, well, I'm not going to try to do that eloquent either. I'll just say that it takes something like what Nancy did to kind of remind you that there's a lot of really, really cool stuff that's been done here over the last seven years. My youngest is a sixth grader right now. He was not even in kindergarten when I first sat down here in his chair and had no earthly idea what the heck I had actually just signed up for. And since that point, it literally has been fasten your seatbelts, you know, keep your hands in the ride until it comes to a complete stop. So it's coming to a complete stop now, which is kind of cool. But thank you, Nancy Agar, for, you know, a little bit of that trip down memory lane. I would also say that although the last two years have definitely taken, you know, ten years off my life, I think, I, I hope that my conduct and what I've done here as a leader or just as a board member, right or wrong, history can judge me, you know, that's fine. But let the new board members that are coming on and kids that see what we did, they can decide if there was a lesson to be learned. Because I'm sure I did some things okay, I'm sure I did some things quite a little wrong. Wherever you find your truth in what I've done, I hope it was my final lesson is that learn from whatever I did and what we did as a group. And to the extent that it makes sense to duplicate it, do it again, ten times over. To the extent that it makes sense to avoid it, like the plague, please, do that as well. But at the end of the day, everything that I ever did here was all about kids. It was all about, and I wrote this down again, my three kids and their eight thousand-plus besties, you know, in Chalkapi. And I am proud as a board member, as a father, that I think I've left my fingerprints here, and that it was finger painting and not fingerprints, we'll say. So that's what I, I hope I left that to a degree. And I'm going to miss Sarah, the rest of the district administration, the fact of matter is, this place is, you know, you've got a powerful group of people that are, they're all here for the right reasons, their hearts are in the right place. So the district's going to be in really good hands. And Dave's done a brilliant job. I don't want to go and name everybody, and maybe that's not fair. But there's a really, really strong leadership team here, and we could not have gotten through what we weathered without each and every one of you. We just couldn't, because everybody played a different role at a different point, everybody was somebody else's strength at a different point when they needed it the most. And for that, I'm going to be eternally grateful. So, and I will just say that I'm leaving the board, but I'm going to remain a public servant. That will not change, it'll just looks a little bit different than it does today. So, and to my colleagues, it's been real. I know things about each and every one of you now that I soon will not forget. But I think, most importantly, we've developed lasting, I think, friendships because of this. And so regardless of whether you're here again, you know, three years from now or whatever, my hope is that we all stay, right, stay connected and let's let this party keep going. That's it. All right. Can you do committee reports? All right, let's do committee reports. Any committee reports? Oh, she's, we don't, so. It's kind of like, uh, the price is right.
Yeah.
Sarah, did you want to present some of this now?
Sure, we do. Oh, gosh. Well, it's just kind of go around this way. This is for Sean Hallett. This is a small token. And there's that. Okay, I've got to hug him. Handtow. And some treats. Judy brought in some Christmas, or holiday treats, Christmas treats, and Jenna made cupcakes for you.
They all had it that meant.
Yeah.
I'll get to find out.
All right, now let's do some committee reports. We're not quite done yet.
Nothing for me.
You?
Yeah, mine happened tonight.
Yep, good.
No.
Angela?
We did have a finance committee tonight, and we just talked about, I think we talked so, so long ago. We just kind of looked over what our projection would be for the next few years and what we might have to do with funding. So we'll probably bring this back to the board soon.
This is more of an other than a committee report, I don't have a committee report, but I was at a Christmas party this weekend and caught up with a family friend who happens to be on the leadership team of the line of hospitals, and has had the opportunity to interact and address our CAPS students at St. Francis, and was very complimentary of how we are well ahead of the curve for high school students to be doing what our students are doing. Here's a member of the leadership team of a large healthcare system talking about how our students are just getting opportunities that other students aren't, and they're going to be that much further ahead again. So that was very meaningful, because we're talking about all the accomplishments, the things that have happened.
Dave, are you in?
Yeah.
All right, well, let's move on to number fourteen. Is it fourteen? I don't even know what. It is. Recognition of Visitors. Do visitors want to be recognized? As always, I recognize all of you.
How do you?
Hi, sir. Come on.
I just wanted to thank the board, both those continuing and those departing, for your service toward kids' education in the community. I've learned in the past two or three years myself that elected office at times is difficult. It comes with its challenges, and oftentimes, those challenges aren't created by the elected. Sometimes they are, I may have been myself. But I think it's fair to say that it is a difficult job, and, you know, we as a society are oftentimes divided on issues, and there's a lot of different perspectives. And no matter what, you need to be proud of the service that you offered your community. So to those departing, thank you very much for your service to our community and our children. To those continuing, thanks for being willing to work for the veteran of our community at large. Thank you, thank you both.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt and the council.
You may help.
I'll take up and say so.
Oh. And you are?
And I have no script. How much time do I have?
A lot, easy to do.
All right. Well, I just want to say thank you to everybody that has served, obviously as an incoming board member next month. I can't thank all of you enough for reaching out over the last month after the election was over to offer, we're here for you, have any questions, concerns, as you take office, we're more than happy to answer your questions, which has been tremendous. I know that, as is said before, all of your hearts are in the right place. This has been a very difficult time for this community, difficult time for all of you. And my hope is that the three that are, four that are departing, Judy stays. But every time that you drive by a school in our district, or you step foot into one of our buildings or athletic fields, that your heart just fills with joy as a result of the service that you've provided to our community and to our district. Because there has been a lot, a lot of good things that have happened in our district that, as is said before, overshadowed by an ugly element. And unfortunately, that's just, that's what happens. Happens in the real world, and happens in the district as well. But I just want to thank you for everything that you've done, your service, and I hope that you'll stay in touch with all of the new board members, and your mentorship would be greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. If I could just add, in the packages that you see is a longtime legacy gift for outgoing board members, and that's what you see in your package, that's what is in your package. But also, in that smaller box, is a lifetime activity pass, so that children can use it to be engaged.
I love that, I can go to my volleyball again.
I actually was telling Maggie to petition this after I'm off of board.
What?
So I could still get one. Yeah, I ran it by Maggie, I'm like, should see if we can get that for any past board member.
Clearly, he does good work.
Yeah. He's worked out already. I did nothing with it, but Sarah took care of it herself.
For the record, we aren't here till December 31st, so this may be our last formal public meeting, but we're quite that guy.
So if we start adding special board meetings, you'll show up for five AMs on Tuesdays?
Yeah, we are here. Yes.
Well, that's the...
I would also say, it's been kind of a while, you know, March 17th until now. The reason I got involved was quite different than why I'm here today. Ultimately, through the election process and everything else, the three that are departing, I would also like to thank you. You know, it was a challenging obstacle that you overcame as a group, really as a community. There's nothing that you signed up for. But also, too, though, you know, everyone's learned through the process, and I think that through the process of growth, all checks and balances need to be rechecked and rebalanced. And I think that that's what this process has allowed all of us to do. If the right people do get engaged, get involved, and push the right levers, then bad elements do go away, which is, I'm grateful for that. But again, I would like to say that at points, it may have seemed adversarial as far as like our exchanges, but ultimately, we did have the same goals in mind, even though that sometimes they don't come across the same way. So I would like to thank all of you for doing what you do, because frankly, I couldn't do it. So if I can't do it, then I have to rely on the people who are in the position to do that. But I can continue to lend my voice, and I'll continue to do that. But at the same time, I did want to recognize, you know, we all definitely have different passions and different strengths, and that's what the board is intended to do. And ultimately, as a collective group, we did do some awesome things. And ultimately, as a collective group, we did do some awesome things. Frankly, the two hires for superintendent have, you know, I'm just one man's vote, but ultimately are exceptional, you know. Across the board, it was such a nice difference from a cultural perspective, but also then to, for the board to then elect, or select the next person to really, I think, take Shakopee to the level it needs to be for the next five, ten, fifteen years. You hear some great things about Shakopee of the district on the news, outside of the negative, and that's what I like to pay attention to as well. One of the ones that I highlighted, picked up on in the last six weeks was K-11 did a story on the level of special education, just achievement goals within districts. And Shakopee was in the top five across the entire Midwest, not just Minnesota, as far as the resources that are put together, as well as just the response times. And it was related to behavioral incidents within schools and stuff, and so there is a lot of different complexities that come into the position of a superintendent, of data tester. All the different things that I never understood when I do a school board and/or administration, the entire process. And so I learned a lot about the entire process in the last twenty months, as I'm sure you all have as well. But yeah, for my part, I just want to say thank you as well.
Thank you.
Okay. What's that? You're home, all right. Upcoming meetings and important dates, as Angela will introduce to you here, we have finance committee meeting, we have our, what is probably the final block in its current concept, is that fair to say, on Wednesday night? And then we'll move into facilities after that. And in January, the fun starts with the new group. So, nothing else, I think before I adjourn, I forgot to say one thing that's really important. Just even though they're not here right now, they're in Florida, the Magic King, they're probably watching fireworks right now, I just want to throw a shout-out to my wife and my kids for their patience and for giving me up for these last seven years. Probably far more than they ever agreed to when they signed, you know, when they signed up for this originally. So I want to say that publicly, that if not for the support of my family, things might be a little different, but thank you wherever you are, have fun.
Good point.
They're not watching live.
They're not watching live. Thank you for cutting your family vacation short to join us one last time.
All right, I've entertained a motion to adjourn.
I'll make them.
I went to this side of the table.
I'll make them.
Tony made it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those who favor saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign? Thank you, Carrie.